Welcome, everybody, to the May 23, 2023, meeting of the Spencerport Board of Education. Would you all please rise and join me in the pleasure? All right, first order of business is approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion? Megan, second, Mike, Paul Beamer, five oh. Okay, next order of business is approval of the results of the 2023-2024 budget vote. I didn't know, did you have anything you wanted to say before that?
Well, I just wanted to thank the community for coming out and voting. We really tried to create a budget that was responsive to the priorities that the community had shared. And again, as I shared in my public newsletter, it's just a tremendous honor to be in a community that continues to support public education. So, thank you to the community.
Any other comments? You have a motion, please. Forty seconds, Mike, all in favor, five oh. Okay, and welcome to our, she had to be on here, welcome to our newest board member. They will start July 1. Marcia, thank you for being here. Okay, next order of business is privilege of the floor. We do have one person, Mr. Bardine. I'm not going to read through all the rules and everything, you know, the drill. I will give you a heads up if you're getting close to the five-minute time. Okay, thank you.
My name is Donald Bardine, and I'm at Six Rivers Drive in Spencerport, New York. My originally, my original intention, my original intention about tonight's board meeting was I was going to address some of the questions that I've asked going all the way back to January 14th. Mr. Bracken spoke with me just briefly before the meeting started, and we're still in the process of getting the correspondence going back and forth on those subjects. And so, I explained to him that I would leave that, those issues alone for now. But one of the most, I think, the fact that we're having this difficulty communication between myself and the board, it kind of, to me, it highlights one of the problems we have here in Spencerport, and why we have a lack, I call it a lack of community involvement in our school system, and what you, what you guys are doing. The way we're structured, the way we're being structured is very difficult for you as a board, or you as a school administrator, and administrators, to really have an ongoing steady dialogue back and forth with the community. It's just not, it's not happening. And I was thinking back to something, I believe it was Mr. Bracken, he can correct me if he's wrong, I'm pretty sure it was Mr. Bracken, explained one evening at one of the board meetings, and I'm not sure which one, that the board meeting is a, is a private board meeting that the public is allowed to attend, and we are allowed, the privilege of Florida, to have some input back and forth. And that's good. I would like to see us as a community, you as a board and us as a community, have an opportunity to have, I'll call it for simple comparison to what Mr. Bracken said before, a public meeting as opposed to a private meeting, a public meeting and invite, get as many as the community involved in that meeting as we possibly can. And I would like to see a forum where we can have some dialogue back and forth. We can't even have, the way we're structured right now, even to simply have some dialogue about the subject that I'm talking about, so it's a very general subject, we have zero dialogue. I stand up here, I talk for, I want to leave by five minutes tonight, I don't think. Well, I stand up here and speak for a brief period of time, and as you may have noticed, I use the lead, and I can watch the rest of the board meeting at my leisure on video. That's great, of course, if you folks are able to do that. But anyway, we need to have a way to communicate. And something that Superintendent Swan has tried would be, what would you call it, on the computer with a thought exchange. That's, that's a good concept, and it works to an extent, but it's very limited. I'm looking at the two, I've already, I've already seen the last two thought exchanges. I'm starting, oh, only a couple of years ago, and one last year. It's clear, there's some back and forth, it's still limited. I looked at the actual votes, and I correctly, was it around, did I see 1300 and some odd people turning out for the vote on the budget on the, on the boarding for the board members? It was around 1300, I'm way back, saw that number. I've been told in the past that approximately there's about 10,000 or more eligible voters, eligible people in our community, in our school system, that there's no, in fact, we don't know. Maybe you think you do, I don't have any idea what the rest of the community is thinking. I have no idea. I mean, I could be standing on an island, I'm the only one that has the thoughts I have. I have no way of ever finding out, neither do you, though. If I were you, I'd be more concerned with that. When I bring up a subject that you may totally disagree with it, but would you like to know what the community feels about that subject? So that you can react properly, and please understand, don't take this wrong, but we, we hire you to run the school system the way we in the community want it run, within the guidelines of the laws and regulations, I understand that. But New York State does not dictate to us how to teach our kids, it's that simple. We, through you, dictate how our kids are going to be taught. And teaching them is more important to me than indoctrination. And I feel there's a lot of indoctrination going on, and I will read that, I'll just put that somewhere, and I'll walk away with that. Mr. Bracken, I look forward to your responses to my questions, any good questions?
Thank you, Ms. Bardine. With that, I want to comment after. With that, we're at the point of consent agenda for the students in the room that are attending. A consent agenda is a grouping of information that the board has provided ahead of the meeting, so that we're able to review it, develop any questions, have dialogue back and forth with the administration, and clarify, most of, most of these things are very administrative in nature. So, we basically vote on those as a package. So, with that, I have consent agenda, kind of a motion. Name, first, Mike, second, Paul Beamer, five oh.
So, I'd like to welcome Mary Beth Antonado. Mary Beth is here today, and part of our consent agenda was the appointment of administrators. Mary Beth will be joining our Department of Special Education, so I want to welcome you. Thank you for being here. Jokingly, Mike was just asking her how her day went, and she said, "Great," and he said, "Are you all ready to do your song and dance show?" So, she said, "Maybe in a few months," but welcome to the team, glad to have you.
Welcome aboard, we're glad to have you. All right, Board of Education reports, tomorrow night, I don't know if anybody else signed up, hey, hey. Don't know if anybody else signed up, but tomorrow night is the Association, American School Association Annual Meeting. We'll be putting, vote new officers for the association, and we'll be dealing with that. I don't think, there's not a whole lot of other real business happening at the annual meeting this year. There's not a lot of new things, like a new director and things like that that happened last year. So, should be a, should be a good evening chance to hang out with some of our colleagues around the county. Beyond that, I'm going to kind of toss it over to you.
Busy couple of weeks, worrying over just, reminding about all the things that are happening in schools during these last couple of weeks. The last week was elementary band concerts, which were wonderful. And this Thursday, and I think tomorrow, are chorus concerts, just a lot, moving up ceremonies, lots of stuff like that happening. See, I don't have any of the, okay.
No other, same, in terms of the schedule, Safety Committee today, nothing major to report. They did just go over the schematics of their hard entries that will be happening, capital improvement project from last year, they just kind of reviewed that. And we just kind of discussed getting some informations from neighboring districts on issues similar to security, some things that they work for them, and we might give them. Did you hear?
Escape, good. All right, well, with that, then, I will.
Thank you. As the board knows, once a year, we try to recap and highlight the work of our special education department, so I'm going to ask Mike at this time to come to the podium. Mike's going to be talking about the focus areas in regards to special education, but also what we're thinking about next year and our focus areas, particularly our continuum of services.
Thank you, Mrs. Swan. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We've gone through, and I know you've received the copy at the midpoint, so I'm not going to speak directly to the slides, but I will reference those in regard to, just to start off, we've identified a few early areas of focus. It's not an extensive list of all the things that we'll be reviewing, but some of these are some, rather long-term areas of focus. And we're going to talk a little bit tonight about the continuum of services, starting with our kindergarten all the way up to our age 21 population. We'll take a little, a look at a program review that we are starting for one of our self-contained classes, our 611 special class, that's How's It Can Do? And then we'll also talk about our transition services. We have the great fortune to have a transition coordinator in Spencerport, and kind of just really wanted to explain a little bit about her role and how much she does to support the students' families in our district. And I know I will adhere to my 10 minutes, I will make sure that I keep to that timeline. So, I like to show this visual, this, this triangle is really a good way to display our continuum of services. So, when you look along the left side, when we see the least restrictive setting, we're always looking at the base of the triangle for our least restrictive setting in the classroom. So, obviously, you can see that the general education program is our most, you know, the earliest level of our least restrictive setting. We go up through the ranks, as you go up in the triangle, you'll see the green areas are still all of those settings that are within the general setting. So, all of those green services are provided to students within our mainstream or general setting classes. When we get to the yellow bars on the triangle, those are program options that remove the students from the general education setting. Red are programs that we don't provide in-house, so those are our residential treatment facilities, our home hospital treatment facilities. So, in Spencerport, we have programs that cover both the green and yellow options. Basically, in December of 2015, there was a field advisory memo that came out from the State Education Department that spoke about, and again, you'll hear some terminologies and acronyms at times in special education, LRE, that's the Least Restrictive Environment. So, back in December of 2015, this, this field advisory memo spoke about the fact that students with disabilities have a fundamental right to receive their special education supports in a classroom and setting that, to the maximum extent appropriate, includes students without disabilities. So, back in 2015, this was through a lot of different laws, regulations, policies, partnerships, professional development, and technical assistance. There was data that was, that was taken and analyzed to look at specifically schools in New York State that really showed that too, far too many students with disabilities were, were removed from the general education setting. So, we really set a goal for ourselves to make sure that we could start moving kids down that, down that, the tiers of the, the triangle there, to the less restrictive settings. So, what we started to do, and I'll show you the, this speaks to our continuum of services in Spencerport. So, when we look at the general education setting, we have two different types of programs that provides services within those general education classrooms. We have consultant teacher services, and that covers K through 12. So, we have those consultant teacher services in all of our school buildings. We also have integrated co-teaching services, so it's a higher level of support. Talk a little bit about that in just a minute. And we currently have those ICT classes at K8. When we talk about that yellow part of the triangle, those are our special class settings. So, those, again, if you remember, the yellows classes are removed from the general education setting. We do have some of those settings, and it's 611 special classes, 811 special classes, 1211 or 1212 special classes, and 151 special classes. So, what we have been working on, as you see, the inclusion of the K9 integrated co-teaching services, that will be our goal for next year, we are expanding that model of integrated co-teaching services up to the high school for next year, which results in a reduction of the 151 special classes, and includes those only in grades 10, 11, and 12 in the high school next year. So, we're working, we've had teachers working extremely hard, changing philosophy and instructional model rather than changing setting. Because, again, we want to make sure that we're including these opportunities, not only is it what's good for kids, this is our, we have to do this based on New York State Regulations, Part 200 Regulations, and again, that reference that I just made with the field memo a few minutes ago. So, that transition that we started to do, again, reference back to that ICT model, we started that four years ago, the current cohort at that time was in fifth grade. So, in fifth grade, we started that transition from 151 into ICT model. Those students have gone all the way up, and with that cohort, we brought that ICT model up through our middle school. So, now we successfully have ICT classes sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Again, we'll be working with that cohort to up to ninth grade in that mainstream setting at high school for next year. We have had the great fortune of, as I referenced earlier, this is a lot of time, effort, energy on the part of our teachers. We've also had the great fortune to work with an outside consultant who's worked with us on the professional development, the planning, the organization of this change in model, and it's been very, very successful thus far. And we talked about the program review, so kind of one of our goals moving forward, as you go back to a few slides, we have a few different special class settings. The first, the most restrictive of those settings is our 611 class. So, looking at that program and starting to identify a few areas of focus within that special class 611 service, we have a K2 class and a 35 class, both How's It Can Do? So, again, we had an opportunity to work with our MOSI's educational consultants to come in and work with our team of teachers, our autism specialist who supports that, those two classrooms, and really look at some areas of opportunity for us within those classes. So, we're talking about really developing more comprehensive training for the program aides, not only their classroom aides, but they're also one-on-one aides that support the students in those classrooms. So, really looking at things such as the use of communication devices, sensory needs, de-escalation techniques, making sure that all of the adults that are interacting with kids in the 611 programs are aware of and have the proper training to interact with the students. The other piece that we're looking at is curriculum and development. So, really spending a lot of time, this is where education consultant has really been an asset to us in terms of looking at, because the curriculum is individualized, it's really based on individual student needs. So, really tearing apart what curriculum needs to be provided to the classroom, and how the teachers can go about individualizing that instruction. It's a key part, because as the students grow through the program, that K2 to 35 transition is great, because it's all in one, one location. But we're also looking at some of the physical setting in terms of, can we provide almost a sweep that the classroom is being connected, or at least in closer proximity to each other, so that there can be more interactivity between the two classes, whether it's curriculum, whether it's sensory needs, or really just the interactivity between the aides, the adults, and the students in the classroom. So, all of those things are areas of focus. We have just started that process, and we're going to continue that work over the course of the next semester coming in. So, over the summer, we'll have some opportunities to work with our consultants as well, and continue that work in football. So, transition coordination, as I said earlier, this is a, we are extremely fortunate, and I appreciate the fact that the board has continued to support our own transition coordinator here in Spencerport. I thought best for her to be able to share with her exactly what her role is, because it is pretty unique, and it's a pretty extensive list of responsibilities that she is currently completing for us. Previously, Laura Costa was our transition coordinator, and Laura was phenomenal, very knowledgeable. Her retirement made me quite nervous, to be honest, because I was very worried about being able to fill that role. But Christina Ashberry is our new transition coordinator. Just a little background on Christina, she's a licensed mental health counselor, and she comes to us from many years working in heritage Christian services. Her role involved direct care management for students and families. She also worked as a Medicaid service coordinator and care coordinator for five years. And prior to that, she was a behavior specialist with adults and children who were duly diagnosed with intellectual or developmental disability. So, she has an extensive set of experiences, she brings all of this to us, and really served multiple roles. She'll talk a little bit about her roles. Tried to have her come in person, but a video would be a little bit easier, so, Paul, if you don't mind.
The transition coordinator is a critical part of the team for students with disabilities. The transition coordinator assists through every major-like transition. So, from pre-K to kindergarten, up through elementary, middle, high school, and then post-secondary. So, whatever those needs are, we are addressing the needs, making sure that they have what they need to be successful, keeping in mind post-secondary goals. I have spent a lot of time educating teams in the primary schools. I have done a lot of consultation, so I've supported a few students through OPWDD and then Children's Health Home, which, which helps with addressing behavioral mental health needs. And then I have consulted with families and let them know about the options that are available. If families are interested, I then begin the referral process, and I am able to kind of navigate that referral process and then bridge that gap so that until they are in that service, we're meeting their needs. A lot of the transition work begins in eighth grade. I meet with all those students individually, and we develop a career plan. With that career plan, I develop IEP goals, and then I develop the coordinated set of activities for the IEP. One big push that I have done this year is Access VR. Access VR is a vocational employment agency, the goal is to help students get a job. And so, I managed that caseload. Last year, they had seven entails. This year, so far, we have 39 entails. So, it's been a huge success. Another part of my job is to manage all the workforce learning opportunities that our 1211 programs have. So, I'm like the liaison between MOSI's and Spencerport. I make sure that our students, their goals are being met through their workforce learning opportunities. I make sure that it's a rich experience for our students, so that they are getting what they need, so that when they are done, when they exit school, they have the vocational skills to be successful post-secondary. I assist students who are going to college with connecting with the Student Support Center or Student Disability Center, to kind of empower students to have conversations with their colleges. And I will sit down with them and assist them with that process. Some goals for the future for this position is to provide more ongoing training to each cohort. It's really pushing into larger classrooms, helping with learner's permit, build more self-awareness around post-secondary goals. What am I good at? What are my interests? And how can I capitalize on that? Another goal is to push into the 1211 and transition programs, talk about independent living options for our students. You know, how to navigate the, the service world outside of school. So, what can I do to support that, that next phase of life? So, one of my goals for the next few years is to really develop curriculum around informed decision-making and understanding what is life after 21 look like, and then continue to grow the Access VR case load, really focusing on 11th grade, get an open thesis in 11th grade, so that they have 11th and 12th grade to develop a living grade plan. Once they leave Spencerport, they will, they know exactly what their path is. Thank you so much for learning about my position, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
I think I picked up three more acronyms, so the quiz is coming. But Christina's role, really, as she just highlighted for us, really goes and touches every level program. And it's a support that not only assists teachers, but also assists our families, and it's absolutely crucial. She does, that's just a short summary of what she does. She's actively involved in classrooms. She's addressing not only, if you think, green and yellow areas of the triangle. Again, she's working with students in the green area of triangle for post-secondary training, post-secondary pursuits and support, as well as the students in our yellow area of the triangle with our workforce-based learning opportunities, which are phenomenal. We continue to expand that role as well, both in-house and through MOSI's. So, Christina is extremely motivated, as you can see, wants to expand her role further. And I think she has a skill set that can continue to serve our population of students and families extremely well. So, I'm happy to set up any visits with Ms. Ashberry, anytime if you're interested in seeing exactly what she does with, with kids and families. Right, I know I'm getting there, so, questions that might have.
No, Mike, I, I, it's good to hear from Christina and hear how that whole part of the program has expanded dramatically over the past 15 years and stuff. Because with OPWDD and Access VR, those folks, that's a lot of stuff that now help our elementary kids that wasn't there, like I said, 15 years ago. So, it's good to see that we're really broadening that reach and stuff, though.
And it's a challenging world to navigate on your own, as a parent or family. So, she, when she talks about connecting with family, she spends significant amounts of time, and just growing that caseload, I think she said, from seven to 39. That is, that is really, in just one year, that's, that's impressive. And it's, it's connecting folks with supports that are available to them.
Yeah, and those, those agencies, as good as they are, it is very difficult to navigate.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
No question about, so you're moving the 15, you're eliminating the 1511. You won't need it at the ninth grade level next year. Is, is the plan to try to transition that out? I mean, some of that, I know, is probably not in your control, be the nature of the students that come to you. But is that kind of where the thinking is?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is he moving that up?
Yep, to continue growing that with the cohort that's, again, will be ninth graders next year, continuing that out, 10th grade the following, 11th, 12th, the following. And you're right, we have students that may need extra supports. So, we'll look at, within, again, trying to provide those supports within the general education setting, how can we provide additional accommodations? Is it a matter of further S D, specially designed instruction? Are we looking at additional assistive technology? What other supports can we put in place to help them be successful in that general setting? And again, we have some, some options that are still in place for the self-contained classrooms, because we know that some students are going to need that level of support. But, you know, I have been really impressed with this population's cohort that has successfully made this transition. And again, I don't want to underscore the fact that this is a huge shift philosophically, instructionally, and our teachers have been great about doing the work in that area, because it really is best for kids.
Mike, thank you for the work you're doing transitioning into this, this role this year and stuff. And Mary Beth, welcome very much, we look forward to working with you all as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'm going to ask Jonathan to come to the podium. We're going to transition into our policy work, so it's important, but just to remind the community, we've been working on our policies. So, tonight, we're focusing on a first-street policies for non-resident students, policy on musical instruments, and field trips.
Right, thank you, everyone, thank you for allowing me to speak before you. After our completion of the manual, I was able to work with Ms. Swan and Ms. Stone and Brown to recommence meetings of the fourth policy subcommittee. When we were meeting, we were able to talk through four different policies, one of which I did not put forth to you tonight, because we were seeking additional guidance from our attorneys at BSK. We have three policies right now with changes, as I brought for you for consideration, both for questions and or feedback as a first brief. The three policies that we have for tonight are non-resident students, 7132, 7480 musical instruments, and 8460 field trips and interschool activity trips. So, policy 7132, it's, deals with what are, called, with all students, it deals with the senior privilege, it deals with students who have a, the families move out of the district, the families are moving into the district, foreign exchange students, scenarios agreed with other districts, a number of situations where a student may continue in the district that either is subject to charges for non-resident tuition, or is allowed to continue tuition-free. This policy covers most of those scenarios. The changes that we've discussed clarifies that a student has to apply for the opportunity to continue with the school district, that it's on a first-come, first-served basis, can't require an increase in the size of the faculty and exceeds course limits. In essence, of limitations on the resources that would be allocated if a student was to request to continue on a non-tuition basis, if you will. One of the points that we did focus on was the situation where a student remains in good standing at all times. In essence, behavioral as well as academically, after that student commences or remains in the district for their second semester. Really, too many questions about this one. This one was pretty self-explanatory in the changes that were being made. Policy 7480 is musical instruments. If you recall, this was a subject of some discussion during the manual process. We were able to locate at least two districts, samples from other districts, that we considered for language changes. In this case, really removing the language that was in there for about qualified individuals renting or being lent instruments. In this case, the language that we put forth eliminates the qualifications for the rental, removes the list of available instruments, because that list may not always be a static list. It could change depending on all resources and what instruments the district has in its possession, but also aligns the rental. It's kind of us lending it for a small fee, but the rental itself would align with the musical needs of the department as well for the students. But it does still keep the idea of a small fee for the rental of an instrument, as well as the possibility of a waiver for hardship situation. This was discussed, this policy itself was discussed a little bit, and we ended up settling on the second sample that we, a lot of language in the second sample that we were able to adopt. Finally, policy 8460, again, this was a subject of some discussion during the manual process. In this case, it is really kind of a wholesale change of language with this policy. This was, again, pulled together from other samples, and this, hopefully, I was not present for all of the discussions regarding the funding of trips, but hopefully addresses the funding as well as the definition between curricular and extracurricular trips, and provides guidelines for the board to put in place and for administration regarding the funding of those trips. It talks about the approval process. It talks about chaperones. It talks about followers and drivers. It talks about a number of categories of information where our last policy may have been missing a couple steps, and this puts a lot more in place for discussion and provides much more guidance about how those processes should work. I know that with this policy, there was one question about the funding, specifically from the Brown. The way the paragraph is worded, it does kind of leave a little gray area to be discussed as you're looking through and determining whether it's curricular versus an extracurricular trip, because there is a gray area between some of those situations, and it does not change any of the current processes that we have in place, putting forth those field trips during budget development and or other discussions that they have regarding the funding.
Do you guys remember the policy when we had that conversation? So, it was that discussion between if something is defined as a field trip, we were kind of lumping them all together under that term of field trip. But what the district would be responsible for paying for, let's say, wouldn't be, like, if my daughter went to Spain this summer. And, you know, it was an approved out-of-the-country trip because it was a district employee, but certainly, the district wasn't paying for her to take that trip. So, really making sure that we have that language aligned with what needs to be done budget-wise, right? So that we're not thinking that the district has to pay for trips like that, really having that clarification. Now, so my question really is that, is, does that language clarify that? I don't know. I'm looking to read.
I believe it does.
It does, okay. Because that was really my question, to make sure that we're clarifying which ones fall into which category.
You know, I think it provides much more clarification, even though there's still going to be potentially times when we'll be going back and forth, but it provides much more guidance for us to follow.
No, I don't know if moving forward, that means that when we approve a trip, it's approved under something different. We'll have to go back and revisit that. If we're all just approving it as a field trip, total?
Or is it?
Or if we have to make a distinction between?
Curricular.
First. I don't know the answer to that question. I'm posing it.
Thoughts?
Or does it, it might not matter.
It feels like most of the trips that come to us are extracurricular field trips.
Correct.
Aligns with the process that we have in place, the trips that are brought to you are over 50 miles, you're having overnight. And that is much more of the extracurricular variety as opposed to regular day academic trips. The co-curricular, we don't bring the board's attention.
Right.
But they're funded by the district.
Does that create enough of a distinction from your perspective?
And I think that we can, so if I was looking at, for example, the trip that we have in our agenda, you know, we could, in the narrative and the recommendations to the board, be clear on that. Yeah. Yeah.
Extracurricular.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And then.
Just adding that.
Yes.
Are there any other questions about any of the three policies that we have put forth here? Right, at this point, it was really just a asking for feedback, questions, do it as a true first grade. We'll be bringing them back, meeting with the policy subcommittee again to discuss one of our other policies that we're working on, and then bringing them back for a secondary.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Jonathan. Moving on, break the table and move on to the time of choice here.
All right, thank you, Kristen. On the revenue side, looks like we're going to be receiving more than what was projected by about $2 million. You can see in the budget increase/decrease column where that's coming from, from a state aid perspective. It was really, nothing's changed. It's transportation. Remember, 2324 aid is based on 2122 expenses, and that's when we made quite a few adjustments at that time. Sales tax, we did receive the first quarter, so even though you're not seeing it recorded here, I knew what it was. And based on that increase at up to $800,000, which is really what's driving the change from last month to this month. Any questions on the revenue? Okay, on the expenditure, again, it is an increase from last month, really taking a much closer look again at staffing and how we're using federal grants, the general fund. With that comes some benefits that Nicole was able to make. So, that's the large change. Right now, we're projecting about being $1.9 million under budget. So, when you put those together, remember, fund balances based on the amount of, even though we're showing positives for both, it's the difference between revenues and expense. When you take that into consideration, we're looking at a net change in fund balance of about $1.9 million. School lunch, again, I can share, sales relatively down as far as, you know, general sales. Food service costs continue to go up, so they're going in the wrong directions. But we are continuing working. I know Jonathan is doing quite a bit of work with Gary Minor, looking at the new legislation that came out, seeing if we can apply and are eligible for any of those, and so we'll keep the board updated as we do that.
I assume Gary and Jonathan, they're working with the other districts around the county just to find out who's coming up with the best mix of.
Gary typically, I mean, he has monthly meetings if he goes out, and they're all trying to.
That was the same thing.
Yeah.
Board, second, all bae. So. Okay, with that, good. Okay, meeting evaluation, any comments, concerns, questions? If I could, then please ask for a motion to move into executive session.
And make a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of those persons.
Good, a second. All bae, 6-0.